Good evening, welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting on March 6th, 2019, Room 124, Town Hall at 7:07 PM. Tonight, we've got a couple of continuances for special permits. We're going to continue the public hearing for 9 Fruit Street. We have the continued hearing for the enclave, 282 Denham Street. We are going to entertain a request to withdraw. And the Preserve at Abbeville and Abbeville Commons are both going to be continued via vote by the board. So first off, I want to remind everybody, this meeting is being audio and video recorded per the open meeting laws of the state of Massachusetts. Madora, could you please handle the motion to continue? I want to reach for 6, 4 and 6 Hill Street and 6 and 7 Streets appeal, as I have to refuse myself.
Sure. I move to continue the public hearings for 4 and 6 Hill Street special permits to be continued to June 5th, 2019, and to continue 6 Hill Street appeal to be continued to June 5th, 2019 as well.
Second.
Are those both at 7 o'clock?
At 7 o'clock. I'm assuming here.
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion or all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Madora.
You're welcome.
Next, we will continue the public hearing for 9 Fruit Street from 11619. When we left, last left off, it has been brought to our attention, there was some concern whether or not the bylaws of the town of Norfolk were approved by the Attorney General in 1953 or at a later date. After further review, it was determined that our bylaws were approved by the Attorney General in 1953. That is the official date of our bylaws. Amendments after that basically are just that, amendments to our bylaws. As a town, we made an error, and I applaud our residents, especially Ms. Clark, for continuing to press the issue. I would ask Mr. Brogan, does he have anything to add to that at this time? What I would like to do, and we can talk about it, I think in open session, is I would like to ask Mr. Brogan to withdraw his application without prejudice, since as a town, we made an error. And I would also ask, as we've done in the past, when the town makes an error to an applicant who appears before us that shouldn't be appearing before us, that we return their application fee. I think it's a mistake, this is something that should have never come to the board, and it was a mistake on the part of town. We're all smarter and better for it, but it was an error. So if that's okay, I would like to ask to close the public hearing, a motion to close the public hearing, and then almost subsequently take a vote on the motion to withdraw. Or I'll ask Mr. Brogan to make the, ask us for the withdrawal without prejudice, and then the board can make that motion.
So a motion that we close the public hearing for 9 Fruit Street?
Yes. But I think Mr. Brogan, he has to first.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Mr. Brogan?
Yes. Yes, I'll withdraw.
Without prejudice. If you have to use the mic.
I will withdraw at this time without prejudice.
Thank you. Could I get a motion to close the public hearing for 9 Fruit Street of, from the board?
Yes, I make a motion that we close the public hearing for 9 Fruit Street?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'm going to ask for a motion now for the withdrawal of the application for 9 Fruit Street from Mr. Michael Brogan without prejudice, and for the return of his application fee by the town of Norfolk for this. Do I get that motion?
I want to get it correct, we make a motion to withdraw the application?
To accept the withdrawal?
Make a motion that we accept the withdrawal of the application for 9 Fruit Street.
Okay, without prejudice?
Without prejudice.
And with the return?
And with the return of the application fee to the applicant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Amy, do we have to do a vote on the table for that? I don't think we do for a motion to withdraw, but, okay, thank you. It is 7:13. I'm going to ask, Chris, could we take a short recess? We are waiting for Mike Colisa to come, and we cannot continue our, I do not want to open up the enclave or continue the enclave until we take care of a few other pieces of business at 7:15. So Chris, could we have a five-minute recess? Thank you.
... Engineering and Bill Scully from Green International. We had a very productive meeting a week ago with things and addressed most of the civil comments that had arrived from Beta's letters. And just some follow-up, as always, over the last couple of days, there's a build-up towards a hearing, there's a lot of information that comes back and forth and everything else. And there was some correspondence from Beta and traffic comments, and then there was a letter from Green International trying to answer some of those comments. Those letters were submitted to the Board of Appeals with Amy today. And actually, since that time, there's actually been more correspondence back and forth between Jason of Beta and Bill Scully of Green International. And it looks like they're going to have the last few items ironed out with everything. So I think that would be resolved before the next hearing date. So I think that's moving along very well as well as it could. Also, from the last meeting until now, I've worked with the architect, and hot off the press was some tweaks and some revisions and elevations of the architectural plans that came over this afternoon. I was going to talk about those for a few minutes and give an overview. Of course, you know, Beta didn't have a chance to review those or anything because they were just received today. Hopefully, we could have some comments and feedback on that for the next meeting as well. So I'll go over those, and then right after that, Matt Murva was going to talk about the landscape comments from Beta, go over those. And if there's any comments or follow-up from the board's consultants or questions from the board, we'd be happy to answer those. And hopefully, then go into a discussion of waivers and wrap that up for the evening with everything. So that's sort of our agenda, how we planned tonight to happen with things. If we could, Amy, let me see, is that the first one there? If we could just go down one, if we could scroll down one more slide, and then, yep, there's the elevations, yep. I don't know how I'm going to do this. Hold a mic, a pointer in my notepad. Yeah, if we could just go to the elevations, yep. So there's actually three different models that we have. Two of them are two stories. All the models have the master bedroom on the first floor. The two-story models have the master bedroom on the first floor with a loft and a bedroom and a bathroom on the second floor for guests visiting. This one here is actually a two-story model. Let's see here, yep, this is the two-story model. And what I'd like to do is to show you the elevations of all the two-story models. So this is the first plan, as you see here. You can open up the next PDF. Scroll down to the front elevation. This is another two-story plan right here. Now, this is a little bit unique, a little bit different look along the front. Of course, there'd be shrubbery and things in these areas. And what would happen is we'd have a walkway that meanders around the side, and we have a side entrance porch and door here. So it just gives another whole look to the front elevation here. You know, some nice landscaping in the front, and then walkway meander around the side to the front door, and that's how we'd have the entrance with a porch. So just to break up the whole look of things, we don't have similar house plans, you know, along the same road. And then if we could just go to the next PDF. And this is the ranch plan. And now, what we try to do is match these in. We put dormers, shed dormers across the top to make it look almost like a two-story. Has a different front elevation with it. We broke up all the elevations with, you know, you're going to have some brick and clapboard and shake type of look with it. It'd all be vinyl siding, but we'll have that different veneers on the building to give it a different architectural look as you go down the street. These have the front doors. Every house has a covered entry like this. And also, if you could just go down to a floor plan. One more, yep, perfect. So what you see here, too, is when you're looking at the front elevation, it's just a flat picture when you see it there. This gives a much better idea of sort of the jogs and everything that happens. So you have the garages, one set back a couple of feet from the other, so you don't have a straight entry here. You actually have a walkway that goes around to a covered entry, another jog coming out in here, and then different jogs all the way around the building with it. So it has a lot of architectural appeal. It's not your typical ranch. And actually, this is, we took some of the elements from when we did the Village at Rivers Edge and actually added to them, added a lot more character to them, a lot more different looks. If we could go back to that front elevation again? As you can see, even we tried to make a different look between units. So you actually have a gable within a gable, sort of to differentiate between this side of the building and that side of the building. So you have this type of look here. And then we even actually had a nice shed roof going across the garage here, just to break it up, so you just don't have one big A-frame going across. That was something that we had similar in other projects we did. Learning from that, you try to give a nicer look, a nicer approach and everything to the buildings with stuff. So this breaks it up very nicely with the different elevations, roofline, shed dormer. You have a gable here in the front, different size, and like I said, a gable within a gable. All the garages will have, you know, barn-style type of doors with windows in them, and even, you know, different types of windows, smaller windows here over the garage and things. All that, a different look for it.
Hey, Tom. Is that a, is this a clapboard siding on this garage, and this is shingle? Or is that just illusion?
No, we would be breaking them up on that. So what would happen is, a lot of times, what we would do, this gives just like an elevation, but on some of these, this is set up so we could actually do brick in here or clapboard siding, and then we could actually do shakes over on this side, or we could do clapboard in there, or we could do shakes up above. So we can actually almost get three different elevations from one different front elevation with the use of different types of siding and building cover. It gives a nice look, it really does.
Tom, were those dormers, that almost looks like a second floor? What's up there?
Actually, we did that on purpose so that you wouldn't be able to sort of differentiate the ranches from the two-story. That's actually an attic up there, and we added these dormers just so it blends in with the rest of the neighborhood, something we hadn't done in previous projects. But we just thought by doing this, it just blends in with the other two-story models, makes it look very nice. But there's not even any access up there, it would be just for storage. Moving along, if we could just go back to the floor plan here on this? First floor plan, yep? Doesn't matter, anyone. And I did hand out hard copies of these to everyone before the meeting started. What we tried to do with these building footprints, too, is the depths are a little bit different. And actually, they range from, I think, about 52 feet to 65 feet. But what we did is the widths are all pretty much similar. You're dealing with about 74 to 76 feet of width for all three different types of buildings. So that gives us the flexibility to move them from one lot to another lot and make them all work with that. And then I know one of the concerns always is lot coverage and things like that, but being very similar in size, we can push one around from one location to another. Gives us a lot of flexibility with that, where, you know, we can mix up the ranches and the two-stories as well. So I just wanted to point that out, that the depth does, there's a difference in the depth because we have in some of them more jogs and things. But if you look at the width, or from here to there, they're all very similar, about 76 feet of width. I'd be happy to answer any questions about these. As you can see, they all have the master bedroom on the first floor and bedroom in the loft upstairs for the two-stories, but happy to do what I can to answer questions. If not, I'd be happy, you know, I could turn it over to you.
Yeah. Tom, on the, in the Abbeyville project, when we made that less dense, we were able to shift some of the buildings so that the garages, that the driveway entrance to the garage was on the side of the building. And that really broke it up. What struck me just looking at all these front elevations is that every unit type has two, two-car garages facing the street, and one of the unit types actually doesn't even have a door facing the street.
That's correct.
So I'm just wondering, do you have any way to perhaps work into these types, a situation where the garage is on the side of the building rather than the front?
We can look at it. We tried to match the floor plans to actually the site for them, as the garage is coming in from the front like that. We could look at maybe moving some here or there with it. The other thing, too, is that if we were trying to separate the garages and move them on the outside, what inadvertently happened is if you took this and moved the garage over here, you're actually going to put a bedroom or another room against this common wall, which then actually reduces the amount of windows to them. So we're taking, actually, I like to be able to put the garages, the stairs, laundry room, bathroom, all on that common wall so that we can actually have as many windows as possible around the exterior. That's the big thing. And I've learned from experience, too, that a lot of folks in the Age Street to Developments do like a straight entry garage in and out, and not so much the side entries and things like that. It's just easier access and stuff. Personally, I like a side entry myself better on things, too. But in this instance here, it just gives us more window space and everything when we do group the garages.
Tom, I was surprised at, but you can probably, from the experience of Rivers Edge, the number of stairs that are in all these units going in, that the one-two-story has, it looks like two or three steps of stairs and two doors, and the one-story has a lot of steps. Have you found that not to be a problem, where, I know, even though some of these are over 55, we can still go, you know, those people, 70s and 80s, there is a concern in the number of steps. So I was surprised at that.
Actually, in past units that we've done like this, is coming up, there's usually one stair, actually be two risers, so you have one stair and then a platform, and then stepping into the house. So generally, from the front door, if we figure an average height of a stair of approximately seven and a half to eight inches, we have three risers going down, or about 24 inches. What we've done before in the past is, when we're asked to do this, we actually can, we can actually make a ramp coming down out of concrete. So the sidewalk that's made out of concrete could actually go flush right up to the front door. There's quite a few of them over like that at the Village at Rivers Edge that we did that, you know, people needed a little easier access than stairs with that. The other thing we did, too, is a lot of times, people don't have two-car garages in here, and we've made a nice ramp that comes down the side of the garage, and they have one place to park a car as well.
And do these all have railings as well, these, all these doors coming out will have a railing going down?
Yes, every exterior entrance has a railing, even though it's not required by code, we put them in.
Right, okay.
So, Tom, and on, excuse me, on two of these plans, it looks as though the first floor height is 10 feet approximately?
That includes the thickness of the floor joists. So when you figure like 10 inches and plus your plywood and things like that, you come down, it'd be a nine-foot ceiling height.
Okay.
And these are all vinyl, the exterior will all be a vinyl of some sort, not going to be wood, it's going to be some kind of composite, I imagine?
Something that's easy maintenance, but it would be some type of composite, probably vinyl, a certain heat type of vinyl, monogram, a shake look, actually very similar to what's right next door at 18 Union Street on that building.
Along those same lines, when it comes time to do any exterior maintenance, even though this should be low maintenance on the exterior, is there a clear delineation to where the owner does any exterior maintenance in terms of deciding if it needs to be touched? Because there's a lot of blending between the two when I look at some of these, if you look at the front profile on one of them?
Yeah, this is, I mean, this is pretty right there.
Yeah, that's clear.
That's pretty clear. Let's see if we can go take a look at another one.
Like the front of C, just looking for that.
This would be something we'd have to address a little more clear in the HOA.
Right, because then it would be clear with the.
There may be something that every year or every other year, everybody's house gets power washed, for instance. So that everybody, every building is power washed at the same time and stuff.
And you mentioned the attic space in the one-story units?
Yes.
Right. Now, if they wanted to build into that attic space, is that something that gets covered by the HOA or?
It would be very difficult, almost impossible, to do that. Biggest reason why is that for the ranches, we use trusses, and basically, you don't have any headroom or anything else structurally. The trusses are going to take up all that space.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Tom, are the effective heights of the ranch units to the, like, two-story units the same?
The ranches might be a little less in height, but not much. We tried to make it so that they don't stand out, so you don't say, there's a ranch, there's a two-story type of thing.
Tom, also, just to, I don't know if you can answer this question, but how would these units be insured by the homeowners? Are they insured as single families, or is there some sort of a duplex component, almost like a master insurance?
It wouldn't be like a condominium master insurance policy. It would be individual homeowners, because they own their own lot and they own their own building, just a zero lot lot.
Only other question I have is just on the, the side front doors, is that? Thinking how to phrase this, do people find that normal to get to the front door through the side? Or is that not really an issue?
These plans have been used in other developments and things. The architects had success with them. It's just something to try to break it up. I mean, one thing that I was looking at, if we look at the plan here, is actually maybe bring in like this porch out and sort of wrap it around like that, too, so it's a clear path, you know?
It's obvious if you're coming.
That, so, but I mean, even if we didn't do that, you know, there'd be a walkway that would meander around here and lead you to that front door. It was just to try to create more landscaping and things in the front of it and try to break up the different elevations along the street.
And you said all the doorways are covered?
That is correct.
Good, good. Any other questions with regard to the architects so far? I know, Bill, you're going to have a chance to have Glenn probably dive into this and...
Well, I'm scrutinizing.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there any questions from anybody in the audience with regard to some of the architectural plans? Come on, Ron. No.
I don't know how many are going to be put up.
There's actually 40 units that'll be put up.
You can leave now.
Just two other things I did want to mention for the record. All the units would have two-car garages, all the buildings have two-car garages, and there are quite a few of them on the, that are budding where the wetland is, you know, where the open spaces going down to where the river is. There would be walkout basements as well, that could have that amenity with it.
You have, and obviously, the ones with decks and patios are going to be on the higher ground area. Is that what you're going to have to, I imagine, fewer of those because of where they're going to be? Is that why you have that, the deck patio?
Even if it's a walkout basement, we could have an elevated deck, you know, seven or eight feet off the ground. But we do have the option for patios or decks, depending on what people want to do.
Okay. Thank you.
With that, I'll turn it over to Matt.
Thank you. Pulling up the Beta's comment.
Dan, do you have the Beta comment letter on the landscaping?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Great. For the record, Matt Murva with Bowler Engineering. Thank you to Beta for hustling on the review to get this in, time for us to take a look at it today before the hearing tonight. Not a ton that I think we need to go through on it. Fairly clean letter, I think, but we did want to just highlight a few items and run through the letter with you, just so everyone's on the same page. The first comment on the existing trees over 12 inches diameter, what is our intent in terms of clearing the site? We did provide a clearing plan, sheet C4, that shows the extent to which we're clearing the existing vegetation on site. And to Beta's point, we do intend to clear everything within that limit. We're not, the only trees we're maintaining are the ones in the buffers that we intend to maintain. So that's clear on that plan. We're glad to add a note to the plan about flagging, flagging those areas that are to remain in the field prior to construction, so that we'll update that for the final plan package and add that note to those drawings.
Matt, can I just interrupt that for a second on that topic? So in going through the waivers, there's actually a couple waivers on this topic. Can we have that limited work area staked out prior to site clearing? And then can you flag any of the mature trees that are in that area so that we know, you know, where they are, inventory them, and then if they inadvertently come down, you know, we can, we have a record of that?
Flag the trees that are greater than 12 inches within the areas of trees to be saved?
Yeah, you'd also see the buffer anyway, but if someone is and somehow the tree comes down, then at least we have some kind of recourse, we can replace it or whatever.
Any issue there? Okay. The cul-de-sac plantings, the plans meet the requirement, really no issue there. The trees shown, the spacing was deemed adequate as shown, so no real issue there. Next page there, retaining walls. We did hear the comment at the last hearing, and it was in Beta's letter, about any retaining walls being a stone-veneered, concrete retaining wall rather than a modular type of wall. We're actually doing our best right now to eliminate the need for walls wherever we can. With the latest soils information and final design on some of those septic areas, we may be able to reduce walls further. If we do need walls, we will build them in accordance with that request. But ultimately, we're hoping the only real walls we have are the site entry walls, which we intended to have as stone anyway. But if we do need retaining walls on site, we'll look at doing them as described in that comment. There was discussion in the letter on the size of the trees. We're actually proposing two to two-and-a-half inch caliper for the trees when they're installed. Beta was recommending three-inch caliper trees. We typically try to do two to two and a half. We actually do have a waiver request for that in the waivers list, and it's just much easier to get that nursery stock. In our experience, they tend to do better when they're transplanted at that size and they're able to thrive and grow in quickly. So we prefer to keep that at the, to two and a half inch caliper at time of planting.
Yeah, why do you prefer the three?
Well, I think actually the three is something that's in the town's regulations, and it's something we've gone through on some other projects, and we've kind of pushed for the three. I won't disagree with Matt that a two-and-a-half inch caliper tree is probably going to thrive as well as a three-inch caliper tree. But it's really something that's in the town's regulations. We've asked for it on other projects, so, but I'll leave it up to the board. We wouldn't object necessarily to a two-and-a-half inch caliper tree in place of a three, but I think on other projects, we've tried to be consistent in recommending three-inch calipers, so.
And the point is that these trees will be maintained by the HOA, right? So if the trees don't thrive, we have a condition in our decision that requires them to replace them, or, so, I mean, at least there's enforcement against an entity and not just a homeowner, which I think is, that is the plan, right, Tom, to have the HOA responsible for the trees and the lampposts?
For the landscaping and the lampposts, that is correct.
Okay.
But I think, to Bill's point, I think, I think we should go to the three-inch tree. I think we've been sort of lax in this thing, oh, a two-and-a-half inch tree does thrive better, but I have not seen any evidence that a three-inch tree, if water properly, thrives any worse than a two or two-and-a-half inch caliper tree. And even though we want these to thrive, we want them to look, we don't want to have twigs, so I think, I would like to stay to the three-inch caliper on the trees, on that, the ones that will be planted on the street. I think it would be, it'll look nicer. It'll be more in keeping with what's on Village Green as far as trees, and that's what I'd like to see. I think we've sort of talked about this multiple times.
Yeah, that's why I brought it up. I prefer the three inches as well.
Yeah. So I think we'd like to stick to that, Tom, if we could.
Okay. Moving on to 5.9.1, the next few, there really were no issues in Beta's review. Skipping down to the topsoil item, 5.9.1.0. There will be some topsoil removed from the site. This is a waiver that we're actually requesting in the waivers list. We will be reusing what we can on site, but there is a net export of topsoil, and we could provide more information on exactly how much, but that is the intent, is to request a waiver from that condition. On this site, by the time we get the septic systems in, remove all of the, you know, organic materials to get foundations and roadways in, there really is a lot that needs to come out, and we'll stockpile what we can to reuse as topsoil on the site. But material with the organics in it really isn't going to be very helpful to us in the construction of the site here. So for that reason, we are requesting a waiver from that section of the bylaw.
Dan, do you want to address that waiver now, or?
If I could elaborate on, excuse me, just like to elaborate on this comment before we move along, because it does tie into a couple of other comments that are in the waivers as well and on the plans. The plans were proposed, and on the plans, it says approximately a 13,000-yard earth removal. And I wanted to call everybody's attention to this because the site was designed as a balanced site, and what Bowler did was actually, that 13,000 represents an estimated export for foundations and septic systems, which is actually exempt from the earth removal bylaw. It's actually, 500 yards is exempt per lot. So actually, we could remove up to 20,000 yards on 40 lots under the earth removal bylaw, basically, when you figure a foundation and the septic system and things. Of course, that's a, you know, the septic systems have yet to be designed, so that's why we have that sort of number in there to just give an idea of what may need to be exported, including all the lots, so the board has a very comprehensive idea of the site work. The other thing is why we were asking for an earth removal exemption or waiver on this is we don't know the quality of the material. For instance, Matt just mentioned organic material. In some areas, you know, is the loom six inches thick that's out there now, or is it two feet thick? Loom doesn't satisfy the structural, you know, integrity that you need for fill and things that's underneath a road base or underneath a foundation. So we may be in a situation, you have to export organics or fill a material that's not, doesn't satisfy the structural integrity to put a foundation on, and then we may have to import material in for that. So your net between import and export, you know, is somewhere around in that 13,000 cubic yard volume. So that's why we are asking for earth removal, because we just don't know exactly, and it's out there, and chances are, you're going to have to bring in structural fill for the roads and the foundations, and you would have to export material that's not as good a quality. I hope that makes sense for everybody.
Go ahead, Matt. Okay, great. Next page, the next two comments on that page were acceptable to Beta, no real issues there, just in regards to what types of plantings we're using. On the last page, the proposed lighting appears suitable for the project, no photometrics have been provided. Tetra Tech's letter had suggested that photometrics wouldn't be required in this case. We're only talking about kind of street-level, you know, single homeowner lighting, we're not talking about street lights in the traditional sense of the word. These are individual, smaller eight-foot posts on each lot, so we hadn't provided them to this point. We do anticipate adding a few of those lights based on some of the things we talked about at the last meeting, providing a little more lighting at the crosswalk location, and probably having at least one lamp post per house lot. Currently, we're showing one lamp post per duplex building at a minimum, so we do intend to add a few lights for the final set of plans that you'll see to try to add a little bit more. bit more in some areas that we think may need it, but we weren't intending to do a photometric plan based on what we had heard from Tetra Tech.
On that note, Matt, it's almost Bill and Jason, I know you're going to be looking again at the traffic again a little bit, is, because one of the mitigations, I'll call it, is that we're going to actually have a sidewalk going down Village Green and Cleveland Street, is, is there any plan for any lights, or should there be any plan for lights? I don't think Rockwood Road has, I think there's some streetlights, but not a lot of streetlights on Rockwood Road. Is there any plan to put any streetlights on Village Green or on that corner of Cleveland Street, since this is going to be, might be part of the mitigation for less traffic in this area? And I don't know how that plays in, but I'll ask the question of both of you. Maybe some for you to look at, and I don't know, Matt, did you have any plan for that? No?
No, no plans for any additional lighting along the town roads.
Okay. Any initial feel on that, Jason, or?
Well, I think that when you're talking about pedestrians and sidewalks, it's all about safety, right? You know, whether, no matter what kind of a road it's on, when you're in some different residential areas, there are those overheads, streetlights that can provide that safety. I think it's really all about maybe a larger picture and consistency, you know, when you're talking about Rockwood Road, and then going on to Cleveland Street, and then Village Green, and then into the site. I think that uniformity is important, but maybe a nice balance to make sure that, you know, I mean, during the wintertime, you know, I mean, you're going to make sure that the sidewalks are going to be plowed, but also you want to make sure that it gets dark a lot earlier. You know, during the wintertimes, you want to make sure that people can see, especially where, you know, to try to connect in over to, you know, to the station further down on Rockwood Road, so, you know, that was really, one of the big intents was for pedestrians to go down to the station, and then being able to walk instead of driving all the time. I think it is something that maybe it's, something should be considered. I'm not saying that, it's definitely something that needs to take place, but at least kind of take a look at what's out there today and see if it can stay consistent through the site.
I may take a look at that, Tom. I'll look at, because I know, we don't want, obviously, to create lighting on Village Green if people don't want lighting on Village Green, any more than it is, but maybe I can take a look at it and I'll report back to both of you on that, what's out there today. Okay. Bill, any other?
No, the only thing I would say is, any lighting that you put on Village Green or at the intersection with Cleveland is going to end up being town-owned lighting, so it's going to be a cost as well to the town, so it should be a consideration.
I just figure if we're putting in the sidewalk at the time, that's the time to put in kind of, any kind of electrical service that we have to support that.
Another consideration, if you're not ready for lights, you may want to think about putting the infrastructure, the conduit and so forth in the ground, so.
Great. Thanks, Matt.
Chris, can I add one thing?
Yep.
I know the town, whether it's in the master plan or whether it's in some of the planning board instructions or things they review, the town likes to have streetlights at intersections, curves, you know, so, I don't know if that on Rockwood Road, outgoing, double checking, but I'm thinking that we have a new intersection coming into this development, at least that should have a light, similar to what we try to do with intersections.
I'm going to look what's there, and then I'll talk to Bob McGee as well, and just see what's, see what the plan is. Maybe we do, like, as Bill suggested, put the infrastructure there, just in case in the future, we find it to be necessary. That's a tough, Cleveland Street and Village Green tends to have a higher rate of accidents, not that it's, not that, for some reason over there, there's, I drive it all the time, so you, for some reason, there seems to be some issues over there. So now that we're going to add pedestrians to it, I'd hate to see it be a worse of a problem, but I like the idea of the infrastructure in a manner. But I'll talk to Bob McGee, let you know.
Good, what lighting will be at the entrance to this, though? On Village Green, when you first enter, what's the first light that'll come to?
Would you mind pulling up a site planning?
Going into the development? Going into the new development, at least what's at that intersection?
Again, there's no other type of lighting other than these eight foot lantern posts that are very residential in scale, so it's not, we're not providing lighting.
Right, but the first light they come to will be when they get to the first unit, first duplex?
There will be uplights on the wall features that are at the entry. And if you can go to, it'll be like C 35, I think, if you can scroll way down. Oh, there it was. Back, back. There it is. Okay, can you zoom in on? Zoom in on this area?
My concern is going to be the very intersection with Village Green.
Yeah, the first light locations are at the residence themselves.
That's definitely something to look at, Chris. That's definitely something to look at, the Village Green intersection with the new development.
Okay.
But you're going to have lights in front of the walls that are going to point up towards the walls, so there will be some light?
Correct, to mark the entry, to announce arrival, and it'll be at those curved walls that we've proposed, the landscape sheets.
Yeah, I don't think the residents want a lot of lighting, probably, they seem to be less inclined for a lot of lighting.
Exactly, more landscape along that edge, and make it feel less, less busy, less intense.
Okay. I'll talk to Bob McGee again.
Lights at intersections are good, because it gives you a chance to see what's happening at that intersection before you get too close, you know, car coming out, car going in, which is what the original intent was, when the planning board reviews any new development, they look at where intersections with that development and within it, and this one has a plan for within it, what kind of lighting will be at that new intersection that's being created.
Do you mind flipping back to the review letter? Street trees shown, planted outside the right of way. These locations are also near the edge of the proposed septic systems, confirm that these trees will not damage the proposed septic systems. Consider placing the trees in the grass strip between the walk and the berm. We have looked at this, we've looked at the space between the walk and the berm, we've got about four feet of planting area there. We typically like to plant trees in greater width than that, and allow the roots to spread out. They tend to stay in the top 18 to 24 inches of the soil profile, and having them behind the sidewalk on the house side will give them greater rooting area and keep those roots at the surface, and really not interfering with the, with the septic systems. We don't, we don't see that as an issue. We are looking at a couple of locations where we might be able to modify some of the sidewalk conditions and potentially move some of the trees closer to the street and away from those septic areas, if that's a concern here, but for the most part, we don't, we don't really see that as a, as a big issue at all. The proposed honey locust trees tend to have significant roots that could cause damage to the sidewalk, consider using another tree. We have no issue with selecting a different species for that, and we'll provide something on the final set of plans that can be reviewed and approved in place of those honey locusts. No, no issue there.
Bob and I were talking about that before the meeting, we did, you know.
Those root zones of the...
Those darn honey locusts.
He's a Japanese maple man all day.
That's, yeah, I thought, I thought you might be. Consider adding shrubs with the proposed trees along both sides of the 200 feet of the entrance from Village Green Street. So I understand that comment. If we could pull, go back to the plan set for one second, and if you can flip back a sheet, or three sheets to the landscape plan.
What kind of lights?
That, that one, yeah. Can you zoom in on that same area right here? You're doing it. So this is the area that Beta was referring to along the entry drive. We're already providing the deciduous trees you see there, there's probably a dozen deciduous trees, and we're intermixing evergreen trees, fir and spruce in between there. We want to give that material room to grow and fill in the buffers to those neighbors. The shrub layer that they're referring to, we've seen that done, in a lot of cases, that's a good idea. Here, it's a little bit removed from where people will have access to water those shrubs. You know, when we're planting shrubs around the individual units, you can hook up a hose to the hose bib and water those shrubs. Without irrigation out here, we don't really see that as a great location for additional shrubs. And the other thing, just kind of anecdotally, in some of the other developments we've seen, and the shrubs tend to get ripped out within, you know, five to 10 years of being installed, if they're out further away from kind of the heart of the development where the residents are living. This is a tough spot for those, just in terms of maintenance, and ultimately not providing enough room for the bigger material to thrive the way we want it to. So we propose leaving the landscaping at the entry, as you see it here, with those additional evergreens that have been discussed with the, with the butters, I believe, I think everyone's kind of on board with how this entry is looking, and just try to minimize kind of the ongoing maintenance concerns that arise with doing more intricate plant beds up at that area.
So Matt?
Yes.
So these small circles are evergreens?
Those are evergreen trees, right. Those are seven to eight feet tall at time of planting.
How, where are they spaced, how far apart are they?
They're about 12 to 15 feet apart right now, so they're going to, they're going to create a massing of evergreens. They'll be touching, essentially, yeah.
So I think the only concern was, was just that we don't have just sort of a, an upper story of vegetation, that we have some infill on the bottom. If the evergreens can provide that infill along the bottom, I think that's probably fine, so.
Okay, and then there was, the next comment was related to adding some shrubs between the units, where we're also showing some evergreen trees. So if you can flip back to the plan we were just at, and just scroll down to this area here, yeah, perfect. So if you look at the areas between the units, we're introducing more of those evergreens to provide screening, really between the windows of the units, so people aren't looking in on each other from side to side. The understory is a bit less of a concern in that case, and if you look at our plan enlargements for each of these unit types, we are providing shrubs along the foundations at the front and corners of those buildings, so there is some understory element, and also an additional ornamental tree at each unit, if you look at the enlargement plans. So we feel like there's quite a bit of landscape between the units, and we certainly don't want to overcrowd that space that's going to have quite a bit of planting in there already. I'm glad to flip to that plan enlargement, if you don't mind, Amy, just to show what the, the next, I think it's the next sheet. Yes. So if you can slide over this way, and slide down this way. Down. Keep going, keep going, there's a couple more. There we go. So each unit is getting this landscape in addition to the landscape that's shown on the overall landscape plan. So there's an ornamental tree associated with each unit, and several shrubs, ground covers, evergreens, and then in addition, along those property lines, on the overall plan, you're seeing what's happening for kind of a master plan level tree spacing, so five to six trees between those units. We definitely feel like that's, that's an adequate amount of planting for a pretty tight space.
Hey, Matt?
Yes.
So who's going to maintain landscaping? Is this, and I've seen some over 55 developments like this, where the HOA is responsible for everything, including mowing the grass around all the, around all the houses, but in this case, you're actually deeding separate lots for each house, so you expecting the homeowner to maintain the landscaping on their lot, or is this going to be an overall HOA thing?
Excuse me, the landscaping would be part of the HOA, and they'd be dues for that, so there's a uniformity to all the landscaping.
So everything, including the lawn?
All the landscaping, the snow removal, that's sort of the benefit of somebody wanting to move here, is that they don't have to take care of their house, you know, in the wintertime and things like that, you know, when it gives them that flexibility to go someplace in the winter, or just not have to worry about it, and also not have to worry about mowing the lawns. We've had very good success with this in another project, where actually it's individual homes that actually are not connected, they're on their own lots, and it's all part of an HOA, and all that maintenance is provided for by the HOA, and they pay dues into it.
Matt, I have a question.
Yes.
I don't mean to get in the weeds.
The weeds?
Just, one of the ornamental trees looks kind of close to the house, I just don't know if that's a concern, that it would start growing against the house, and if... Specifically, the ornamental tree on the left.
Sure, yeah, that one's about, I'd say 12 feet away from, the center of it is about 12 feet away from the corner of the house. You know, we have flexibility in the field to make sure that that's going in the right spot when we, when it comes to time of planting. We're not talking about very large trees here, we're talking about cousa dogwoods, we have a list of what the potential materials are, but there's, you know, more upright material we could use for, if we're, if we're kind of close to a property line or a house. So those are kind of selections that we can make as this is in construction, and we're in the field, making sure things are laid out properly. That's a good, good point, we'll make sure that we're not obstructing or having branching growing into, into houses, but that's, we've done this on other developments, and, you know, we can maintain those trees to not be growing into those, those areas if they are tight, but also, we'll just make sure that they're planted adequate distance away. Any other questions?
More, one for, for Bill is, you didn't, you didn't make any comments with regard to the landscaping across the street, the entrance of this, that there's going to be doing, you're going to do some planting there right across the street, or some enhanced planting across the street? I just didn't know if you had any issues, and the other thing was the pathways, the retention ponds, there was no, you didn't make any mention of that, were you satisfied with both those?
Yeah, so I think in regard to the property across the street and the headlights, I think what we've seen and what was discussed at the meeting last week, I think we're good with that. Again, I would suggest with all of this, that since the board's going to require someone to oversee the construction on the town's behalf, that that be part of it, and, you know, when, when it's planted, I think you'll be able to see if, how it actually looks in the field, and it may have to be enhanced a little bit at that time, but I think in general, we're satisfied with that. As far as the boardwalk, we didn't take a real close look at that, but I...
This is the pass going down to retention ponds?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, you're on the boardwalk, okay.
I'm sorry, yeah. But I think, again, in general, I think the layout is good, I think the landscaping around the ponds makes sense, so, I guess the only thing I would suggest is, I know Matt, there's a few minor disagreements with what RLA proposed, if the board's okay with it, I'd suggest maybe a conversation between RLA and Matt, just to maybe iron out a couple of things. I think there is still some concern with the septic systems, and once they're finalized, that whatever trees go near those, those systems aren't going to intrude in the future into the leach fields, so.
Have we got anything from Wade?
Not yet. You haven't received anything from Wade yet, have you, from the board to help with the septics? You haven't received any from Wade yet, have you, from the board to help with the septics?
No.
Probably add that to the list.
Except that there was anything from the original supplemental.
Yeah, I know.
I don't think there's anything that, that we've seen that needs to be revised prior to any decision the board makes, but just as plans are finalized, I think a conversation might be good, so.
Okay. You have any problem with that, Matt? Or Tom? Okay. And four-inch caliper trees, right? Four-inch caliper trees, right? Five, okay, five-inch caliper trees, right?
Six. Anyone make a six? Go ahead once.
I think you should make it a seven.
There you go. Go ahead.
We do have testing, I think, I mentioned this last week, we did do some witness soil testing with Wade back in December and we do have some more testing scheduled with him in the end of March. I think March 27th through the 29th and then there's another period in early April. We have, we have some more testing scheduled with him.
Okay.
Doesn't the testing have to happen within a certain time period?
That's, that's right. Prior to April 30th, I believe.
Prior to?
Prior to.
Okay.
As to do with groundwater elevation?
Yeah, right. Okay. And on the buffer that's gonna be on across the street, I don't think I've seen a detail for that. Do we have one?
I think, I think you did.
We, we had a rendering that showed proposed trees added to that berm at the last hearing.
Is that gonna be in the right of way for Village Green Street or is it on the private property?
I think it's on the private property. I believe it is. Yeah. Would you happen to have the, the package from last time?
Tom, you've worked us out with that owner? Cause you would obviously need to have some kind of license or something to get on the property to do that.
Yeah, we have, we've had discussions with the, with, well, there was actually two owners. There was one who's, we had quite a few discussions with and they actually sold the house.
Couple of years ago.
And then we've had some discussions with the new owner. And there's quite a bit of landscaping that's already over there. And I believe it was on the site walk that we talked about adding a couple more evergreens infilling a little bit and that's what Matt has proposed with that. Obviously, before we do anything, you know, we would talk to them and get their permission to plant those. I mean, it's all to, you know, to their benefit, whatever they would want to do over there.
I don't know if we have that accessible here, but it wasn't a plan, it was a three-dimensional before and after view.
So we need to see something that we can incorporate. If we're gonna put this as a condition, we want to see a plan, exhibit that we can reference.
If you like. I, I think what we would do when it's finalized is just add that to our overall landscape plan.
Right.
If that's okay.
Yep.
Great.
Can I ask a question regarding aesthetics of the whole project? Not necessarily landscaping, but who would happen if somebody wanted to put solar panels on one of these houses?
Solar panels?
Yeah, I'm just kinda curious. Could they do it?
Wouldn't that be governed by the HOA?
That's a great question, actually haven't given it a lot of thought right now with that, but we'd have to incorporate something with that into the HOA, for sure.
Does anybody do developments, I know it's a little bit slightly off topic, but does anybody do developments where all the houses just come with solar panels? Is there anything like that going on?
Not really, because every house faces a different direction and really you want a southern exposure, you know, the best you can, you know, to get that to maximize your solar and, you know, photovoltaic energy. But interesting enough, I mean, actually Certainty came up with a roofing product probably about 10 years ago, eight to 10 years ago. The chairman may be aware of, called Apollo. It was actually shingles that looked just like shingles, but they were actually photovoltaic panels that you put together, so you wouldn't even see it on the house. I've yet to see any of those roofs put in and then I think Elon Musk came up with a similar idea, eight years, you know, just a couple of years ago, and get all the credit for it, but there was other companies that were there before him. It hasn't been much, much success, Bob, with it, but it's hard to actually do a whole development where it's worth it to do every single house unless you start putting solar panels on the ground.
Any more tree questions, Bob?
Better have it, not need it.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Any questions from the audience with regard to the architecture landscaping plan? All right.
Now we're to the, everybody's favorite topic, which is waivers.
Oh, they just look full of teeth.
Traffic?
No, we, we, we're not prepared yet. They're gonna do a little more reviewing.
The house where it's sitting here, it's the clock's ticking.
Well, I'm concerned, actually, that Jason has informed us that he's, he will be leaving Bay. Are you gonna be able to, are you gonna be reviewing this before your departure, Jason?
Not a problem.
Okay, great. Bill, I hope you find a suitable and equal replacement.
Sure, he'll be hard to replace.
He will be.
Oh, thanks for lying about it. Or I'll have to remount my old traffic.
But it gives you the opportunity to, to really pick Bill's, Mr. Scully's traffic study apart now, cause you'll be gone after that, so you don't really have a good time with it now, right?
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Just a little info. So yeah, no, David, that's, we're gonna hold off on that, cause David, that's, yeah. So now we'll, we'll segue into waivers. Try to do some of these tonight, if that's okay. Some of these we're gonna have to go back on, as you know, Tom. We thought Sean might be here, but I guess he might have had a conflict, but we'll find out about that at the 20th meeting, we can keep on going on those, while we don't get through tonight.
Okay, so this waiver list was generated by John Smolak to somewhat reflect what we did for Abbeville, so there'll be some familiarity with it. And what he tried to do is incorporate a lot of our decisions that we made in Abbeville into this, this product, basically assuming that we would make similar decisions for this project. So I just, I went through it without that kind of bias and I made some comments under our proposed action column. The format's the same as what we, what we did for Abbeville and it's similar to what we did for Rockwood. I did look at the Rockwood decision, since that was our most recent final decision, to see how we address some of these specific waiver requests from, from that project. I think there's some overall desire to be consistent with what we do with some of these requests, such as, you know, minor streets requests such as berms and pavement thickness, things like that. So the first bylaw request, waiver request is the earth removal bylaw. We talked about that briefly. There is a note in the plan about the export, net export being 13,000 cubic yards. I mean, Tom just explained the reasoning for that. So aside from that, I guess it would be a balanced site and that's just estimates, is you might be recycling some of that soil, you just don't know yet until you actually get on, get on the site and see what that's like.
Yeah, that is correct.
And I did check the bylaw again. I mean, I, Tom is right, it's 500 cubic yards per lot, so even if you're at 13,000 total, you're, you're under the threshold. So I'm not even sure you need a waiver from this, and I think maybe we should just get Sean to weigh in on this, but.
Actually, just technically with that, I was just concerned that maybe you have one lot that has, just say, for instance, three feet of unsuitable material and maybe we have to remove 800 yards from that one lot, bring in good structural fill for a foundation or something else, but then the lot next door is only maybe 100 yards or 200 yards. So this just gave us the flexibility so that, you know, it's, it's the whole project, that if we do have a lot that may exceed that 500, we're not coming back here every single time. That was the reason for it.
That makes sense.
Yeah, yeah. Agree.
All right, so the next one is the wetland protection bylaw and regulations. There we go. So I, I actually think there's, Tom asked for a waiver from section 2B, but I think it actually implicates a lot more of the bylaw. I think it's B, D, E, F, and G and H. So the bottom line is, in Norfolk, your bylaw exceeds the requirements under the state act. You have essentially a local resource area that goes beyond what the state regulates and that's the buffer. The 100-foot buffer under the state act is not a resource area in and of itself, but Norfolk it is. So this project would, or the Conservation Commission, if it had jurisdiction of the project, could impose conditions with respect to not just the wet, not just any wetland alterations, but also any alterations of the buffer area. Most of the project is staying outside of the 50-foot buffer. In fact, I think all it is. The, some of the wetland basins are right up against the 50-foot buffer line, but there is a fair amount of activity, grading and so forth, and drainage basins within the, within the second 50 feet. The applicant has agreed to accept a waiver action that, that provides that if the Conservation Commission threw its review of the project under the state act, deems that there were local interests that need to be protected, that they would accept conditions for those local interests. So I thought that was a pretty fair and good faith compromise, asking for a waiver from the process of having to go through a local hearing under the local bylaw, but accepting conditions under the local performance standards. Did I characterize that right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So are you generally, do you want to give me feedback now on whether or not we're taking, accepting these, or do you want to just discuss them?
I think if, I think if people have feedback, we'll give it to you. If not, we'll accept it as it is.
Okay.
Okay? I will go around and petition each one after each one, like we did at Abbeville. If you have a comment, make it.
All right. So the next one is scenic road bylaw. So bottom line is, I mean, what this means is that if there's trees in the, in the right of way of, Village Green is a scenic road, so if there are trees in, in the right of way for Village Green that are proposed to be taken down, the planning board would ordinarily have the jurisdiction to decide whether, under what conditions those trees could be taken out. The project is proposing to clear some vegetation for site distances. There was an exhibit attached to one of Mr. Scully's prior letters that showed the triangles, the site triangles, remember? And so they're gonna clear some of that area to ensure safe site distances left and right at the intersection of the project and Village Green. I actually propose some language here that prior to any tree removal in the right of way for Village Green, the applicant should at least tag the trees that it wants to take out. And then the board can have the opportunity to go out there, either have a consultant or a town plan or somebody, or tree warden, go out there, look at the trees they're proposing to take out, just to make sure and confirm that those trees are actually necessary for the site distances.
And this is on Village Green, too, the new entrance to the entrance of the project?
Yeah, it's a very limited area that they're clearing, so.
Okay.
I'd like to delegate that to somebody other than the board, like DPW or-
I would say the tree warden, which is the DPW director.
Yeah.
I know Bob wanted to volunteer, but I think he's busy enough already.
And, and just to make sure the board understands, too, any trees that may be necessary for the sidewalk to go out from Village Green into Cleveland as well.
Right.
We would flag those and have the opportunity, you could have the opportunity to look at them as well to make a decision.
My only comment on that was, I was just hoping that we could show the clearing lines on the actual, the clearing plan within Village Green, within the street. In other words, take the sight lines that were shown on the, the traffic study report, include those on the plans.
We can add those to the plans, yep.
You could probably even add that diagram as a detail on the plan.
Yeah.
Is that what you mean, or? Cause you have to zoom in to see it.
Just be able to, I, I thought it would make sense to include that on the, the tree clearing plan, just include the site triangles on those plans as well.
Why don't you add that to it as a detail?
We can add that, yep.
It's actually in the, the traffic, we'll just add that. You can add this to the-
Yeah, yeah.
So you put that in?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the next one is street lighting and we've talked about this the last couple hearings. The lamp posts are gonna be not in the right of way, that's gonna be conveyed to the town in Norfolk, but they'll be on the private property, but they will be maintained by the homeowner association. So the bylaw that, at issue is just, it requires a deposit of money to the town to pay for the electricity for the, for the lamp posts and since electricity is not being paid for by the town, it's really moot, so I think it's okay to waive. Next one is post-construction stormwater management. Your bylaws have a, a general bylaw provision governing stormwater, so I think it's reasonable in this case, as we have in, I think, prior cases, including Abbeville, to waive this, this section, since it's really subsumed within the 4D process. We review the stormwater management system. There'll be conditions in the permit governing the stormwater system and there'll be a final review of the stormwater drainage calculations and plans by Sean prior to construction of the project, so.
Good. Makes sense.
This bylaw essentially requires that, that lots not be cleared and just left unstabilized for more than 60 days. I'm assuming this is really a prophylactic request, you know, probably intending to do that, so I suppose a waiver isn't really harmful to the town's interests. I mean, there'll be conditions in the, in the, we have stock conditions in the decision that deal with this issue about erosion control and stabilization, so.
And that would also fall under the stormwater pollution prevention plan with the SWIP and things as well.
My only question on that one was, doesn't the Nipte SWIP require stabilization within 14 days if construction in that area ceased?
There's a, I know that there, you know, once you, there's a 14-day waiting period for, once you submit the ENOI until the project is covered under the permit, and then once the site, I think, has 70%, it's 70% stabilized, it's considered stable? I don't think there's a, I don't think there's a 14-day period. I can double-check.
I thought it was after 14 days, if you haven't worked on an area, you, you have to stabilize it.
Yeah.
Well, if there is, yes, they have to comply with it.
If it's, if it's part of their permit, so.
It's gonna be in the SWIPs.
All right, next. Okay, moving on to the zoning bylaws. A lot of the stuff is, you know, your zoning bylaw has, has a lot of verbiage about uses and dimensions and we've gone through this before in other projects. You know, the, the first section here that's being asked to waive is, you know, a blanket requirement that, you know, no building or structure may be used in a way that's, that's not in conformity with the, the use regulations, in a nutshell. So we're essentially waiving your use and dimension requirements to allow the project as shown in the site plans. And there, there are specific sections where we're gonna list out what the dimensional standards are for, for lots. But this is an R1, or R1 district, it's single-family residential. Obviously, this is not a single-family project, so. So we'll just skip ahead to uses within the R1 district, single-family dwelling, waive to allow a total of 40 age-restricted dwellings as shown in the site plans. Each, each unit is located on a separate lot, but having a common building wall. So. Come on page eight and then, or page nine, skipping down to page 10. Watershed Protection District. So I, you know, I'm not clear whether your work is even within the Watershed Protection District, but I haven't seen this map to actually confirm that, but.
I believe it's within the-
I believe it's within the Watershed Protection District. Randy and I did look at that- Randy and I did look at that, but it's not within the Floodplain Wetlands Protection District, the next one down.
Okay. But you want to waiver from the Watershed District because, I mean, you're not doing anything that's not allowed in the district, right?
Yeah, we're not doing anything that I can't think, I think it's just, it's there because of the includes all streams, brooks, rivers, ponds, lakes, named or unnamed. So that's where we fall under it. I'm not sure if that pathway or the, or the covered, or not the covered, that crossing there. I'm just not sure how that would comply with it.
Okay.
If we wanted to limit it to that, we could do that as well.
Yeah, why don't we just, why don't we have your guys take a closer look to see what exactly you need a waiver from? Because if you don't need a waiver from it, I think we'd rather not waive it.
Yep.
And so the same, same thing with the Floodplain District. Can that come out, then, if you're not in it? Okay. All right, so the next one is the intensity and dimensional regulations. This first section just says that no lot may be built upon that doesn't conform with your intensity regulations, so waive that subject to the conditions of the decision. Then we get to the specific dimensional requirements, and there is, the two columns here on the right show what's required and what's being proposed. So I structured the waiver to say that the dimensional requirements are waived, provided that the buildings on the site conform to the following dimensional criteria. The first one is that there's a minimum distance between the duplex buildings of 20 feet. Number two, the house lots shall comply with the following dimensional requirements. Minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet, 30,000 is required in the zone. Minimum frontage of 18 feet. Yeah, I guess you do need the required circle. I struck that out, but you do need it because that's the frontage. Yep. And then, yeah, so the required circle requirement would be waived because that requires a width, essentially, the same as the minimum frontage, which is 150 feet, so they can't comply with that. And then in terms of setbacks, you've got a front yard setback of 30 feet, that's what they're proposing. They're proposing a side yard setback. They said zero, but it's actually zero on one side, of course, and then at least 10 feet, I think, on the other side. I think I looked at the plans, I think you have at least 10 feet.
That is correct.
Okay, so I think I'd like to say 10 feet with an asterisk, and that applies to the side yard that doesn't have the building on it. Does that make sense?
Should we specify someplace that the, that zero and all of the... Just so it's clear in the...
Yeah, I mean, it should be obvious, but, okay.
Get in your note below that, where you say you need to itemize the lots we require waiver for.
Yeah, so that's for maximum site coverage, because you don't need that for every lot, right? I think it's only a handful on the north side.
Yeah, there's, I don't know the exact number, there's probably a half dozen or so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you actually spell those out? Because I think, wouldn't you rather know?
Yes.
You don't want a blanket waiver this, especially where you actually comply with it, I think, for most of your lots. Is that possible to do that?
Yep.
And then, you know, my thinking on this, Mr. Chairman, is that, you know, I think there should be something in here that says that the lot coverage associated with the buildings doesn't exceed what's being proposed on the site plan. So you have site plans that show the footprint of these buildings. You don't, you know, you don't want the applicant to come back and with a plan that doubles the size of that building. So I think there should be something that puts the onus on the developer to stick with what he's represented this whole time, is these are the size of these buildings. They're not going to be something much, much larger. Does that make sense?
What have we done in the past? Have we specified that in the past?
Um...
Isn't that...
I don't think we have.
I don't think we have, Dan.
Well, if you don't, then you don't have any control. I mean, you, they could come back with...
Why would they? I mean, they've submitted a plan, and we've approved the plan as is. How could they possibly increase the size of the building if we've approved a plan with specific dimensions on it?
Well, you'd have an argument that violates the requirement and the condition in the decision that the project has to be built in accordance with the site plans, but...
We always say that, yeah.
But I always like to be more explicit, if, to avoid any ambiguity or any arguments that you could...
I mean, we've never run into that before.
So I have in other projects, not Norfolk, but there's been situations, in fact, I had a project in Middleton where the whole project was designed based upon an understanding of what the size of these houses were. Actually, Sean was the peer view engineer on that, and the developer, you know, McMansion eyes the subdivision, and that created a huge drainage problem because it was so much more impervious surface. So I'm not saying it's going to happen, but it's, I think it's just prudent for a board to have some kind of control on...
Would the building inspector pick that up during the building process?
They should.
I would like the flexibility, if a customer does come in, that say wants a sunroom, for instance, added in the back, or just say that they would like the family room two feet wider or something. I mean, we do have the setback from the lot line that'd be 10 feet, so that, you know, we do have some limitations there. You know, just so that there's some flexibility to slightly customize some of these things to what somebody may want. I'm not saying everybody's going to want a sunroom, but there probably would be a few that might like something like that. And the other, the other part of this, too, is if we're worried about impervious with that, you know, we have some driveways here that are, you know, 100 feet, 80, 100 feet long. We have some that are 30 feet long. I mean, in all reality, if we're worried about impervious, I could shorten up driveways and things like that and actually, you know, have a little bit bigger footprint or something, too. But basically, I'm just looking to offer a couple of options that some people may want to customize their house. But we have to be pretty darn close to these plans that we're proposing to you here.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that there needs to be a very firm numeric number. It could be a number, like, you've got, you must know what your footprint size is, and so if that's, you know, 2,000 square feet, I mean, the board could make it 2,500, just some number to give you that flexibility, just so it's not 5,000 or 6,000.
Let us look at the footprints, and then...
Come back with the...
And then just give you a number that you could put on there.
Good. A maximal, maybe a maximum size.
Yeah, that's my point.
That's all, just a maximum.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. And then the next one is lot width, frontage, and setback lines. So this is another dimensional requirement that regulates the width and the frontage of these lots. I think the simplest way to handle this is to say that the, this provision is waived to allow the lot configuration and layout that's shown on the site plans. So this doesn't have anything to do with the buildings, it just has to do with the lot boundaries. So they are what they are, they're clearly shown on the plan, and if they want to deviate from that, they'd have to come back to the board for a modification.
Good.
All right, so build factor. And this, I believe, has, you know, more, this has to do with the shape of the, of the lots. There's a formula that's set forth in the, in the bylaw, and my approach is the same here, that you will waive this requirement to allow the configuration of the lots and the shape and design of the lots as shown in the site plans. Same thing with continuous billable area, this requires at least 60 percent of the lot be upland. And same approach, if you're comfortable with it, that the site plans are approved as shown. Corner lots, you have a requirement in the bylaw that corner lots have the minimum yard and frontage required on both streets. They don't comply with that, so you, same approach, waive it subject to the conditions and as shown in the site plans. Next one, section F. Yet another sort of catch-all provision, that all buildings and structures be constructed in compliance with the provisions of the bylaw. So they need a waiver from that, you waive it subject to the conditions that are imposed in the decision. Section F5 deals with accessory buildings. They need this waiver because I guess the central mailbox facility may be within a side yard setback or a front yard setback.
I think it could be technically considered an accessory building, too.
That's what I mean, right? So that's, that's why they need it.
So are we waiving it just for that one particular item, or are we waiving the entire bylaw?
Well, it's just for that one mailbox facility.
Okay.
Yep.
So you'll phrase that in such a way that it's only limited to that?
Yeah. Yep, so the way I worded it was waive to allow the location of the central mailbox facility as shown in the site plans.
That's pretty clear.
All right. F9 is signage. I think the next one is two? No. All right, so, yeah, that's right, we have two sign provisions in the bylaw. There's F9A14, and there's F9B1C6. So F9A14, no subdivision sign may be erected on property belonging to the town of Norfolk nor any, on any street right-of-way. Now, what sign are you proposing that would be within the right-of-way of a road? Your development sign isn't going to be within Village Green, is it?
No, it isn't on that.
Unless, I mean, I guess your road is going to be accepted as a public way, and maybe that's why you asked for it, because then it would be...
Yeah, that's right. That sign, that arch sign is going to be within the, within the right-of-way.
Of the future public way?
Correct.
Okay. So bottom line is, they want the waivers from these two sections to allow the project sign that's going to be built into the field stone wall on both sides, right?
That's fine.
And I don't think we have a final detail on that yet, right? So do you want to propose something in the final plan set after post-permit, and then...
We'll have that in the final, the final set, similar to how we showed it in the Abbeville set.
All right, so that'll be a post-permit condition, they come back with a detail sheet showing the design of the sign, and you approve it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Subsection F11, site plan approval. This project would be subject to site plan approval, but for 40B, the 40B process supplants or takes the place of that process, so that can be waived, it's appropriate. Same thing with design review. G3, certificates of occupancy. This section says that buildings can't get occupancy permits if they're not in compliance with the zoning bylaw, so we would waive this only to the extent the bylaw requires buildings to comply with the zoning bylaw, where provisions of the bylaw have been waived in the decision. So it's limited to just the waivers that we're granting in the decision. All other provisions of section G3 would apply, so you have to comply with the zoning bylaw provisions that aren't waived. H3, affordable housing development, this is your inclusionary zoning bylaw, it's not applicable here since they're doing a 40B with 25 percent affordable, so that can be waived.
All right, Dan, is, who's working with Sue Jacobson to determine the location of the affordables? Is that, we've gotten pushback that we've always waited too long for that piece of the process to be done?
Yeah, it's not, it's not actually within the power of the zoning board anymore to review that or even veto it. So it's something that they have to do to meet their requirements with the subsidizing agency. So when they go to sign the regulatory agreement after this permit's been issued, at that point, they'll have to have a plan that does, that shows where the affordable units are going to be on the site.
No, I mean, my point is, they've complained that we've not included them in the process or told them about how far along we are, and they want to know sooner where those affordable units are going to be, they want to work...
Who's they?
Sue Jacobson, who's the, who runs that...
Affordable Housing.
Affordable Housing.
Okay.
She's requested that we bring her into our process, even though we don't have, like you said, jurisdiction over it, but she wants to know where the affordable units are going to be.
Well, do you guys have a plan that shows them, or?
Actually, just to elaborate on that process a little bit, what happens is when we file the regulatory agreement with Mass Housing or the subsidizing agency, we actually have a plan that shows usually, you know, it's just like every fourth unit, just because it's going to be interspersed evenly within the development. That subsidizing agency is usually the one that tells you, this is good, this isn't good, and it's up to them. But as soon as we actually put together that plan, I'm happy to supply it to Sue that she can look at it, too, so she knows where it is. But ultimately, it's Mass Housing or the subsidizing agency is the one that determines where they're going to go.
Right.
Okay. I'm just trying to include them sooner because she's, she doesn't, she gets angry at us when we don't, when we wait till the last minute. I don't want Sue Jacobson mad at us.
Most definitely. We'll make sure we get it, Joe.
Thank you. Sue, I hope you're watching.
Okay, so the next category of waivers are from the planning board's subdivision rules and regs and special permit rules and regs. The first section, the first waiver request seems to be a blanket waiver, and I don't think you need it, I don't think it's appropriate. We're going to get into the specific subdivision rules and regs and have a discussion about each one. This doesn't seem to be necessary. I can talk to John after tonight about it, and if you guys feel strongly about it, we can have a discussion. But this isn't from any specific requirements, just asking for a full waiver of the bylaw, of the regs.
If I remember correctly, I think it was just because the planning board was the governing agent before, you know, the government, the county, and now it's the DVA, but I don't think there's a problem with it.
Well, that's the next one, and I don't think that's even necessary either, because that is what 40B is all about. We step into the shoes of the planning boards, you don't, you don't actually need a waiver from that, so. Requires a plan showing the existing trees and proposed plantings within or near the right-of-way, they've done that already, so, and we're going to have a condition that requires the trees to be planted as shown on the plan, on the landscape plan. There's a couple different sections of the rules and regs that require cross-sections or deal with cross-sections. This isn't the one I was thinking of, there's actually a requirement that cross-sections be provided every 50 feet or something to that effect, and, but this is something different. This is requiring cross-sections for each street, roadway, drainage ditch, and sidewalk. Bill, do you have any comment on this one? I guess, I think I've kind of missed this, and I'm not sure why, why we need to waive it.
Well, this comment, or this requirement, is more for what they call a typical section, where for each street you would show generally what the cross-section of that street would be, and then there's a, I think there's another condition later on that requires actual cross-sections at every 50 feet. So I, I'm not sure we didn't review the still part of the plans. I don't know if you guys have a detail of what the, the street cross-section is that you're proposing?
I think it was, Randy, correct me on this, but I think it was just actually to replace a cross-section that is proposed in the site plan with the one that was in the subdivision regi... that cross-section that is proposed in the site plan with the one that is in the subdivision regulations.
So, yeah. So, so if there's a... If there's a typical section on the plans that shows the width of the roadway, what the construction of the pavement section would be, then I would suggest that it makes sense to waive it from what the typical subdivision roadway would be in the regulations. If that makes sense.
All right.
Which I'm not sure it does, because I mean, there are a lot of skeptical looks. So that...
So they've got a cross-section sheet, and it doesn't necessarily conform to the subdivision rules, is that the bottom line?
Yeah.
All right. I mean, I think you and Sean should just advise us on whether this is an issue or not, right?
Yeah.
Why don't we table that? Impact studies and assessments, that's, you know, that's something that we've already basically included within our 40B review process, so that can be waived. Traffic impact analysis, we actually have one, so that can be waived, and I made that note in the column. Section 3, procedure. Local boards review and approve the plans. The 40B process takes the place of this process. Norfolk boards and commissions have reviewed the site plans and provided comments, so that can be waived. You know, a lot of these, you know, 3.4, 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, these are all sort of boilerplate requirements that can be waived subject to the conditions in the decision. Water courses. So we actually encountered this with the Abbeyville. It's okay to waive this, but we need to make sure we just have the right easement rights for access across the wetland, the easement rights and the conservation restriction that's going to be conveyed on the wetland section. That is going to be a restriction that's conveyed to the town, is that right?
It would be subject to the conservation restriction, yes.
Okay. So that can generally be waived, and we'll have conditions in the decision to deal with that issue. Tree planting requirement, we're going to include a condition on it. Walkways, pedestrian ways. This actually requires that the sideline of the proposed walkways be staked at 50-foot intervals. Any reason, Billy, can you think of why we'd need that? Seems like it's...
No, I think maybe when you're looking at a large subdivision, it might make more sense, but I think on this site, I think it'll be pretty clear where the walkways are, so I wouldn't see any issue with waiving it.
Next one is tree removal. And the way I read this, I think this requires, this deals with removal of trees in the right-of-way, or within a tree easement area. But the proposed action on this is that, you know, per the conditions of the decision, we're going to require that the limited work area be staked out, and that trees, mature trees within that limited work area be flagged and identified prior to any work, so we know where they are, what they are, and if there's any damage to trees during the construction, we can have some recourse. The next one is, this is an offset requirement, that intersecting roads be offset at least 350 feet when it's intersecting with a primary street. Are we sure, I don't know what the definition of a primary street is, is Village Green actually a primary street?
I don't know the definition, I believe it's a secondary.
Okay. So you might not, you may not need this waiver then, right? I think the reg says that intersection, yeah, it's actually here, intersections of secondary and residential streets with primary streets, so you're not, you're not intersecting a primary street here.
What have we done in the past with this one? I don't...
I don't think we've come across it.
No, I don't think we have, yeah, this is a new one.
I don't think they, I don't think they need it either. I think you got a secondary street and the entrance.
Yeah, it mentions 14, 414-2, subdivisions, extensions to subdivisions, or cleaner cable, 25 more blocks will have at least two points of access to existing first street, the second paragraph. I could have the area in the...
At the beginning, it was good to speak up.
Sorry. He just talks about having subdivisions having more than 25 blocks, more than, at least two points of access.
Okay. All right, so that's a good point. So what was put into the second to last column, that, we should actually change that to reflect the second paragraph, not the first paragraph. Okay, so they only have one means of access, so they need this waiver, if they don't have the waiver, they don't build the project. So we've gone through this issue, that this is a long dead end, it's a dead end on a dead end, so we know what those issues are, we've mitigated that through, the sidewalks are going to be built to allow for more pedestrian and bike access to the train station in town center. So I think we've gone through this issue of safety with one access point, but it is what it is. Reverse curves. I was unsure what this meant, and whether you actually needed this, are there actually reverse curves on the plan?
There are, oh, sorry. There are reverse curves on the plans, and...
Does this require there to be a straight segment between reverse curves?
That's right.
Okay.
Right.
And you don't provide that?
No.
Are you close, or is it...
I don't even think we're close to the 150 that's required.
Okay. All right, so I guess we should ask Sean to weigh in on this, if he has any concerns with it, but I don't, I think if he had, he would have flagged this issue when he reviewed the overall layout of the road. Okay, the next one is right-of-way width and alignment. So they're asking for a waiver of the curb-to-curb width of 26 feet down to 24 feet, and then the right-of-way width from 60 feet down to 50 feet. I think we've talked about this, and I think everyone's comfortable with those waivers.
Yes.
Okay, next, grades. So this requires essentially a leveling area at intersections of no, a grade of no more than 2%, and what is the grade at your intersection that you need a waiver for?
It's approximately, I think, 3.5%.
Can we say not to exceed 4, just so we have a cap on it that... Yep?
Yeah.
Or, or if you know what it actually is, why don't we just put that in there? If it is 3.5, I mean, so can you let us know at the next meeting?
You may want to give yourself a little bit of a buffer, in case when you're actually...
Yeah. I mean, do we, do we stick with 4?
No. Go with 4.
4 is a little steep, right, at an intersection? Yeah.
It's 3.71.
All right, next, cul-de-sacs, lengths and designs of cul-de-sac roads. You obviously need a waiver from that, so the waiver would be to allow for the layout of the road as shown on the site plans, subject to the conditions in the decision. Next is slopes, slopes of excavated cuts. Regulations require a minimum slope of 3:1, what is, what slope are you asking for or proposing here?
Our plans don't show anything more than 3:1, but I don't know if we want to, again, allow for a little bit of tolerance, construction tolerance?
I mean, I think our general practice is, is we don't grant a waiver unless you need it, and if you need it, you come back, and it's a minor modification, so it's not a full hearing. Do you, unless you guys want to give them...
I don't want, you know, this is so minor, I don't want to, personally, I don't want to be bothered with a minor modification. I don't know why we can't deal with it now.
Well, this does actually have a pretty big impact, and it's not, there's a pretty big difference between a 3:1 and a 2:1 slope, it's, in a look, you see it on a site when you're looking at a road, it's...
To me, I think we should not waive it.
I would agree, keep it 3:1.
Could I make a suggestion, is that we have to do the final design plans and site plan, and that this is actually waived to the extent it's shown on the site plan, so we can actually define where a 2:1 slope may be when we submit that final site plan? If we don't need it, it won't be on the plan, but, you know, we could actually show an area. I'm just thinking some of the drainage ponds, and how the buildings go around that, and some other things, and there may be a situation in there that we do have a 2:1 slope, but we could show that on a final plan.
But when you come in with those final plans, can't you just ask for the waiver at that point?
As long as the board considers it a minor modification.
I don't see how they couldn't, I mean, it's, if it is what you're talking about, just spot areas around ponds and roads, I don't think that would be...
I think I'd like to see it at the final plan, you know, just ask for the waiver at the final plan, we'll make it a minor modification.
Okay.
We don't even have to have public hearing on it.
Is that something that we can handle administratively in the land use office? We've done that in the past.
Yeah, and that could be done, that wouldn't need a vote of the board, that could be done administratively, correct?
No, not if they come, not if we, not if we do it so that they have to come back and ask for a waiver that has been granted.
Maybe the board would have to...
We can't delegate to some, to a staff person to grant a waiver.
No, I meant the modification, I mean, it can't be done in the land use office.
No.
So it has to come back to the board?
Yep.
But it wouldn't, and it would require a public hearing, correct?
It would not.
It would not require a public hearing.
No.
So that would be, we could do that.
Inevitably, you're going to be coming, I would think there's going to be a few tweaks here and there anyway.
So basically, the board would take a vote that if we did have to come back, that it would, whatever that modification would be, that it would be deemed a minor modification or grading, that would be the first vote, and then the second vote would be to grant that minor modification.
Correct. And we've done it in the past, I mean, we've done it with 106, 108 a couple times already.
In the way the regulations are written, the board doesn't have any, they don't really have the discretion to say something as minor as that is a major modification, that, the regulations actually spell out what is a minor or a major modification. All right, slope of driveways. So I guess your regulations prohibit driveways from sloping down towards a street? So...
Essentially draining into the street.
Yeah, okay. And so you have some driveways that do that?
We do, yeah, we do.
Okay.
Basically, all the driveways on the high side of the road.
Okay. Can we actually say that here, that the lots on the north side of the road may, waivers granted for those lots, but not for the others? It is, yes, yeah.
I think this actually is to prevent driveways from draining into a street where the street may not be designed to accommodate the impervious area for drainage, but in this case here, just asking, Randy, is that, the site design for this actually includes the impervious area for the driveway, so if the driveways do pitch towards the street, it actually is designed to take it on that, so. I would like to actually have the driveways pitching towards the street, and then it just makes it a little bit better, instead of pitching back towards the house, and then trying to swill around the house in all instances.
I think that makes sense to me, and that was, I did comment on, one of the first iterations of the plan sets was, just, there was real no grading at all between the garage and the street, so I think as long as you've accounted for it in your drainage report, then I think that makes sense.
Street cross-sections, this is the requirement that we mentioned, that cross-sections have to be shown in the plans at 50-foot intervals. We dealt with this waiver request in Abbeyville, and we granted it because it wasn't deemed to be necessary every 50 feet. I'm assuming that Bill and Sean would concur for this as well, that the cross-sections that they have provided are adequate.
Yeah, and again, I, this is a little bit antiquated, but I think with the grading plan, contractor has more than enough information to be able to construct it per the design, so I don't think the cross-sections would serve any purpose.
The only comment I have on this is, this waiver request kind of contradicts the other waiver request of waiving the typical cross-sections, where this references the typical cross-sections.
Yeah, let me go back and try to reconcile these two provisions, and we'll talk about it at the next hearing.
If I can just add, you know, I think the column waived and replaced with typical cross-sections probably isn't correct. I think it's kind of related, but still two separate issues. I think the typical cross-sections are the details that they've shown on their plans, which don't agree with the subdivision typical sections.
Right.
I think this is really specific cross-sections every 50 feet, which is more of a design approach than a typical application.
We just discussed this before with Abbeyville, where it was more of a, was it not a drafting, how you used to draft versus how you draft now is...
Yeah, not, again, as you say, not to get into the weeds, but, sort of, prior to the implementation of AutoCAD, and the way roads are designed now, you used to do a cross-section of the roadway every 50 feet, and that's how you developed your grading, that's how you developed all of your sort of backup sidewalk impacts. Now with AutoCAD, you do it in a different way, you do it sort of as an overall picture with contours, so, like I say, it's a bit antiquated.
What, our bylaw?
No, no, just cross-sections. Mass DOT is, still uses them on their road projects, but it's really not something the contractor uses that much for construction. Dan's going to straighten that out.
Okay. All right, next, walkways on existing roadways. This is a... This is a, this would apply to, I think, walkways on Village Green, which there aren't any, so I was actually a little confused as to what, what this required and why you needed it. Have any comments?
Because this is going to be the one where they're going to, we're going to add a walkway or a sidewalk, is that, is that, is that what this referencing?
I'll take a minute to look it up, I'm just trying to remember what's up.
Yeah, this, this says, "Walkways shall be required on the applicant's property along all existing public wa, public ways, which immediately abut the proposed subdivision." So this would be like, for Abbeville, if, if there's, on, on Lawrence Street, you, you, this would require a sidewalk on Lawrence Street abutting the Abbeville project. So that doesn't apply here, because the only portion of the project site that abuts a public way is just the entrance. Right?
And in, in fact, we're putting sidewalks down Village Green anyway, so we don't need the waiver.
Yeah. Okay, section 4, 9, 4 dot 19, Stormwater Management Systems, this is another provision in, in your bylaws that, that governs the Stormwater Management System for projects for subdivisions. This is covered by our conditions in the decision, so it can be waived. 514, staking prior to construction requires that the property be staked along both sides of the, of the right-of-way. It wasn't clear to me what the purpose of this was either, do we have experience with this in Norfolk?
Yeah, I'm not, not sure what experience there is in Norfolk. I mean, typically, the contractor is going to stake out the area of the roadway so he can grade it correctly anyways. I don't know, Tom, how, if, if you have any issues with how they might stake it out, if, you know, I. But the contractor will typically stake out his control, so he knows where he's cutting his roadway and the elevations he's grading to, so.
So maybe you don't need this waiver?
Minor thing, minor thing actually is, yeah, I mean, we, we would do this anyways and stake out a 50-foot intervals throughout the site. What we wouldn't do initially, as we're trying to bring the site to subgrade and stuff, is actually stake out the lot corners, the easements, and the actually, the, and where they terminate on the right-of-way. That, you know, that would be eventually a little bit further on into the process. We wouldn't do that prior to the start of construction. And, and I guess prior to the start of construction, is that before tree clearing or something? Because the stakes are just all going to get ripped out. I mean, we, we would do this after the tree clearing and we stop bringing the site to subgrade, have 50-foot stations like that. And I don't have any problem with that, I guess it's just the way it was, is, is worded here, it just doesn't make sense to do it in that before construction.
Dan, are you going to work with that a little bit?
Yeah, I'll work on that.
Okay.
I got one question with the Stormwater Management System. And what are you requesting the waiver from? Are you requesting a waiver from the last part of the section that refers, it, it says, "Refer to the construction requirement standards and requirements of section 5.3." I, I see later on the waiver requests, there's a whole bunch of items in section five that you're requesting waivers from, 5.3. Is that what you're requesting the waiver from for the section 4.19?
Yeah, I guess there's some stuff above and beyond the state regulations that's in here. I mean, we are complying with the state regulations.
What in particular that's beyond state regulations?
Hydraulic analysis. I think there was some other detailed stuff in here also. Does the board want the applicant to, I mean, there's like 10 pages of regs.
Yeah, and it's got, and it's going to come up again, so why don't you look at that and get, next time we'll address it, okay? Because there's going to be more of that, right, Devin?
Is that, is that a, is that a typical waiver that's been granted another prior 40 B's? I think, because we, we took that one off of some of the other ones.
We'll just, let's just wait, we'll address it next time.
Yeah, there's some other stuff here about.
Setbacks, property line setbacks, and, I mean, we have a, we have a stormwater basin that spans over multiple properties. You know, it talks about 25-foot setbacks to property lines, 100-foot setbacks to the, to the front property line. So we can, we can certainly go through, go through the requirements.
Give us a little more detail, just give us a little more detail in this meeting, okay?
Okay. So now we're down to the 5.21, minimum, minimum widths and depths of streets. All right, so you have a cross-section detail that shows the, the depths that you're proposing. And I guess, I was hoping that we'd have some feedback from peer review on this. Do you want to summarize what you've asked, is it, is it the pavement thickness, or what's the, do you know what the issue is? Or what, what sheet is this on?
I'm, I'm not sure what, what's shown, I know in Abbeville, because the intent was that the road would be taken over and accepted as a townway at some point. That we had recommended that the, the pavement thickness and construction of the pavement be per town standards. I think there's other requirements in there regarding widths and so forth, that probably need to be waived based on the proposed cross-section of the road. And I'll defer to Sean, but I thought at the last meeting, he had mentioned something about that as well, that their recommendation was that at least the construction of the roadway be per town standards, since it was going to be eventually accepted.
Actually, to elaborate on that a little bit, I think there's a, there's a graph in there or a chart that actually has the widths of the streets and things. And I, and I want to say, according to the subdivision regulations, it's supposed to be 26, I believe it is, and, and it came out at the last meeting that we'd make it 24 feet in width. However, when you, when you look at that town regs, it was two and a half inch thickness of binder course, and I think Sean suggested three inches. So basically, that would be shown on the cross-section that would, you know, for, for thicknesses and widths would be revised to reflect those comments.
So, and I, I would only suggest that the pavement thickness shouldn't be any less than what the town requires. If it's more than, I think that's fine.
Yeah, that, that, that's actually a half inch more than what the town would require. So it's actually an improvement from the, from what's proposed for that width of a road. And that's because there's more houses than would be typical on that type of subdivision.
All right, so, so there's two tables in the regs, 5211, 5212. Sounds like you may be complying with this, so do you want to run through that before the next hearing? And if there's something you actually need a waiver from, flag that for us?
Okay.
We can look at it, I know we haven't complied with it, so yeah.
Okay.
I think it was a 24-foot width and also the thickness of the, the asphalt, but I can confirm that.
Okay.
Okay, the next one is the requirement that you have granite curbing, slant granite curbing and edging. The regs require granite edging on both sides of the traveled way. And what's being proposed here is a Cape Cod berm along both sides of the roadway. It runs up against a four-foot grass strip, is that correct, grass strip? And then on the other side of the grass strip is, is the sidewalk. So I think typically, we've waived that where there's a, where there's a grass strip. Where you have a road that abuts the sidewalk directly, you'd want the vertical curb. But in Rockwood, we granted that waiver.
The only thing we did, didn't we talk about around the culverts, that it's still required granite? I thought we.
Around the catch basins, you mean?
Catch basins.
Catch basins, culverts, yeah.
Into the side, the side way, heat cap ramps.
Right, and we still required granite, I think, is that typical or bill? I know it's.
So I think it's the next, isn't there another one?
I think we, I think, I think on 106, 108, we did do it, we didn't do it, we got to, I think, 84 Cleveland, but then we went back to the 25 Rockwood Road, that we wanted to see granite around those, I think, just for structural integrity.
Yeah, we're getting to that one.
Yeah, I think that's, that's the next waiver for.
That's the next one?
Inlet stones for, for catch basins.
Okay. But what about the intersection radii, do we, is there a rate that governs that?
I think there is, and I, again, I, I'm not as familiar with these site plans, but were you proposing granite at the intersection of Village Green? And so that, that radius on the corner coming in from Village Green, I think, is proposed to be granite? Which, which makes sense and would be a good practice.
And what about the cul-de-sac, is there any concern that the cul-de-sac should have granite?
We, we would actually propose actually the Village Green and New roadway intersection to be vertical granite as the entryway, that, that would be that. And also, just to clarify on the next one, we don't have any problem with putting granite curbing, a curb inlet and transition stones where the, where the catch basins are on that, that's not a problem either. On the, on the cul-de-sac, there's, there's so many driveways and curb cuts that are coming off that sort of cul-de-sac. It, it may give it a irregular type of appearance, coming up with a, a dive stone or a granite curb inlet flat, then back down and over again. I, I think the Cape Cod berm all the way around the outside would probably look the best and not have as many interruptions. I defer to Bill on that with things.
Yeah, I would agree, I was going to say the same thing, that on the cul-de-sac, where it's kind of a tight circle, if you have multiple driveways and granite curb, and you're kind of going up and down, and you have curb cuts. I think the, the appearance will probably look a little chopped up. And I think with the berm, you'll get a good, good product, you'll get a tighter pavement. Because you can construct the berm either with the top course or on the binder course, and then you have a nice tight joint when you do the top course. Is Nichols Way a, a granite curving or a, a Cape Cod berm, do you recall?
Nichols Way is, is Cape Cod berm, except for the, the radii coming in and actually the circle, but there's only two driveways off of that circle. Just looking at the plans here, I think there's, there's four or five driveways off of this one, one, two, three. There's, there's four driveways and there's actually a parking area, so there's, there's really not much curbing there whatsoever to, to put in. And basically, to have like a eight-foot piece of granite curbing, and then slope going down on either side driveway, and then another eight-foot piece, it just doesn't, it doesn't look good. And that's actually a place where the plows can catch pretty easily too.
Okay, the next one is 5210-2, clearing and grubbing. So we've, we've got conditions in here, we've got waiver decisions that require the limited work to be flagged before any site clearing. The trees would be tagged, the mature trees within the limited work will be tagged, so we know where they are. So I think that, that suffices, we could waive this, this provision and have the protection of the conditions for those trees. And we dealt with the scenic road trees. The next section is what we just talked about, the catch basins and curb inlets, they'll be, we actually denied this for Rockwood, and so they'll, they'll have to comply with what the regs require for those. Right, so you want me to take it out?
In that section, wasn't there something about having basins within a maximum of 250, I think 250?
You speak up, yeah.
Within that section, I believe there's something about having catch basins every 250 feet, which, there's some sections where we don't have that.
Can you identify those, and then we can just waive those too?
Yeah, it is in there, so, yeah, flag that for us for the next hearing, and we'll have Sean review it. Is there any reason why you can't comply with that?
I mean, I just say that we're, you know, we're kind of following the slope of the land, and you really don't need basins every 250 feet.
We have some high points and. All right, I mean, we'd want our engineer to look at that, so.
Sure.
It says it's on continuous grades, so I think the way I interpret that is as soon as the grade changes and you have a high point, then it's no longer, it's 250 feet from the high point, yeah.
Okay, the next one, so this is a provision that requires flared ends at stormwater discharges? Technical issue, I'm not sure if I understand it, but why can't you comply with this?
We do have one flared end, it's, it's just not a metal flared end, I mean, we were thinking like HDPE-type plastic versus metal.
Does this require metal?
Pardon me?
Does this require metal?
I, I believe it does.
Yeah, flared metal ends.
I'm not sure how to interpret that, it's flared slash metal, I don't know what that means.
It's.
All right, so, so I'm just going to put in here, you're proposing an A, what was it, plastic?
Yeah, yeah, right, HDPE or plastic.
Make any sense, I'm confused. Make any sense? I'm confused.
Well, I'm sure I can add to their confusions. I don't know the exact language. But typically, where the pipe ends and discharges out into the detention basin, you'll have some kind of end to help retain the soil around the pipe, which might be a head wall. Or a lot of times, there's a flared end, which is a section of pipe that kind of widens out to allow the water to dissipate a little bit. And usually, you want that flared end section to be of the same material as the pipe you're using. So if you're using concrete pipe, that end section would be concrete. I suspect some of these regulations may have been written when corrugated metal pipe was being used a lot, and that's why it talks about metal ends. But I would agree that if they're using corrugated plastic pipe, the HDPE pipe, that the end or flared end sections should be of the same material.
All right.
I'm not sure I can tell you whether you actually need a waiver from that or not. But I think, without having really reviewed the design, but I think what they're saying makes sense, you just want it to be the same material as the pipe.
Sounds like we need a bylaw revision. Put Rich on that.
If I could, if I could just elaborate, I just think that probably goes back to a time before they put flared ends on it, was probably just cut the pipe off and leave it there.
I think the next one talks about the horse tracks on it, and the wire wheels, right?
All right. The next one is fire alarm systems. It's an odd requirement. I think it, I mean, these buildings don't require fire alarm systems or sprinklers, right? They're just--
I think, once again, that goes back before cell phones were prevalent, and it was probably pull boxes and fire alarms on the streets.
Is that what that means?
I think so, yeah. That's another antiquated one, really.
All right. 5.9 street trees. Street trees shall be planted within the grass strip. They're asking for a waiver. They want the street trees planted on the other side of the sidewalk. Tree wells. This provision requires tree wells to protect mature trees where there's excavation in close proximity to mature trees that are being saved. The only question I had on this was, if there are any mature trees that are close to your excavation, such as in that buffer on the north side of the property, or on the abutters properties on both sides of the entrance road, you might want to acquire tree wells there. Have you surveyed, or have you surveyed any of the big trees at this point? Or do you know what's out there?
No, we haven't. But we've agreed to actually flag those trees over 12 inches that are in the buffer. And also, we can do along the entranceway there between 16 and 18. And if there are any trees bigger than 12 inches, then we can make a note of it and see if there's a way to put some type of tree well around it or something.
Yeah, if it's, say, within 30 feet of the limit of work.
So--
30 feet into the buffer?
Yeah. Yeah, if the tree trunk is within 30 feet of that limit of work.
Outside of it or inside of it? Within the wooded buffer that we're preserving or outside of the wooded buffer, if it's large?
Wouldn't you want them-- Go ahead, Bill.
I mean, typically, the tree wells are used where you're trying to save an existing tree, and you're changing the elevation of the ground. And I, again, I don't know, you're not really regrading within the buffer area, right? That's remaining as-is. So--
Wouldn't we want to just account for those at the 50-foot perimeter?
Right at the edge.
Yeah.
That's what's planned.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. Yeah, so those trees that are right at the edge of the buffer that's remaining, yeah.
I don't think you need to go 30 feet in, though, because I think--
Well, I mean, it depends where your roots are. If it's a huge tree, the roots extend 30 feet out. So I'm just, I'm just providing it, maybe it's 10 feet or 20 feet, I don't know.
It sounds like Tom may be willing to look at that and provide a tree well if necessary, which I think is all this regulation says, is that if it's determined it's necessary, you'll install a tree well.
So you want to defer to the tree warden? I mean, that's actually what the regs requires. So, all right, so we'll flag the trees, you're going to flag them, and the tree warden will come out, and if it's a well, then--
We'd, we'd actually flag the trees, say, if we can agree, you know, within 10-foot of the limit of clearing. So any tree that's greater than 12 inches within 10-foot of the limit of clearing, we'd flag it. If it's over the 12 inches, then we can make a determination to put a tree well around it.
Provided that the tree's in decent shape, though. It's not something you'd want to try to save if it was on its way out anyway. And not everything within that forest is going to be of specimen quality, so--
If I remember, there's a lot of pines. Those are not going to be--
Yeah.
Trees we're going to save.
So just, it'd be good to be careful not to include every tree that's over 12 inches, even if it's a rotting, decayed, you know, stump of a tree. There's some judgment required in there. And I'm not sure how to word that in a, you know, in a condition.
Well, I mean, I think the requirements is deemed necessary by the tree warden. So I think that kind of covers what you're talking about, Matt, that if the tree doesn't make sense to try to save it, then you don't put a tree well around it. And it's only trees that make sense to save.
Okay.
So we really don't need the waiver. Doesn't sound like we do.
Well, I think we ought to--
You want to--
Maybe put some language in here, such as trees within, I think 10, 10 feet's a little close to me. I think 20 feet's more appropriate. And then if there's a tree within 20 feet, that's--
Except for trees within 20 feet of the 50-foot--
Yeah, of that buffer line.
Yeah, if there's trees within 20 feet of the limit of clearing--
Yeah.
We gave you 10 feet. See how nice we are?
That are hardwoods and greater than 12 inches in diameter.
Okay, so we lost our pines.
We can wordsmith it. I got some of it, you have some of it, yeah, 20 feet, yeah. 12 inches.
Hardwoods.
Not to be confused with the seven-inch trees you're planting for us with the seven-inch.
There's another section in here. It's 5.9.10 that we didn't ask for a waiver for, but it came up with the landscape comment letter that Beta submitted. And that had to do with, I believe it was the loom--
Say again?
Removal of topsoil.
Okay. Which you're going to stockpile until, you're going to stockpile pretty much that until you determine what you're going to need or not need.
Yeah. I mean, we have no issue with putting it down six inches thick or anything like that. But we'd stockpile, you know, enough there till we, you know, we know that we, you know, we can do that. And then, you know, that would be removed, the excess would be removed with that, so it's out of the way. But, yeah, we did not request a waiver for 5.9.10, but it makes sense that we do.
Okay.
It's actually 5.10.
Right.
It's 5.10. And basically, the regulation just says that removal of topsoil will not be allowed.
I think we had that same issue on 25 Rockwood as well.
Okay. Streetlights. Similar requirement as before. So the action here would be to waive the requirement subject to the conditions in the decision. The lamp posts will be installed within the site on private property maintained by the HOA. So they will not be conveyed to the town of Norfolk. And next, we have some appendix requirements. The first one is fees for earth relocation and removal, so asking for a waiver of those fees. Appendix B are the forms that they would typically have to fill out if they were doing a subdivision. They're not doing a subdivision here, so that's appropriate to not require those to be filed. Appendix C is the typical cross-section form for streets. They've, they're proposing to just use the cross-sections they provided in their plans. And then D, I don't think you actually need a waiver from this. This is, Appendix D is essentially copies of the Mass Highway Department manual on how to build roads and things like that. It's not, it's not a requirement, it's just an appendix that is guidelines for developers on how to build their roads. So I don't think you'd waiver from that. Moving on to the Board of Health rules and regs. The first one is guidelines for subdivision plans. So when Boards of Health review subdivision plans, this requirement can be waived because it's a process requirement. It's already subsumed within the 40B process. The next one is regulations for project plan and subdivision approval. So similar to the last one, requirements, submission, submittal requirements and fees. That can also be waived since it's already taking place here. The next one was, is a little bit more substantive. This is the Unique Groundwater Supply Protection Regulation in Norfolk, one of the only towns that has one of these. This requires a maximum of 10 milligrams per liter of nitrogen at property boundaries, and 5 milligrams per liter in Zone 2s. And it would require the applicant to actually do the modeling to show that they comply with this on all the lots. And so I think it's probably appropriate to waive this, assuming our experts agree. There's no public water supply. Everyone in the neighborhood is on public water, right? There's no wells-- --on Village Green. So this isn't a particularly dense project. If it was a dense project, you'd want to see maybe this kind of modeling. The next section, section, well, I mean, that being said, we should get something from Wade. We're still expecting some kind of memo from him. Is that right?
Yeah, we should see some.
We should have something in the file from the Board of Health.
From the Board of Health, and with regard to the subdivision.
Wasn't there something from the initial notes of hearing, that a year ago?
Oh, really?
Last year, yeah.
Okay. I'll take a look at that. And if it looks adequate, we can dispense with the rest of this. All right. So next section, Section E, these are miscellaneous fees and bonding requirements. DPW, this is the water connection fee. They're asking for a waiver of the water connection fee of $2,850 with respect to the affordable units only.
Yes, fine.
I think we've done that before.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And the next two have to do with your 40B rules and regs. And these are basically submittal requirements. And we're at the end of the road here, so I think if there was an issue with these, we would have raised it by now. So I think it's okay to waive these. The first one is requiring the PNS to be provided. The second one is how many copies of the plans.
Dan, on this, we haven't talked at all about bonding of this project at all.
Right. So the typical condition, I usually have a whole section that deals with security and performance security, that typically the road, we don't usually use bonds. We require the covenant approach, so they can't get occupancy permits until the road is completed. And in the infrastructure, the stormwater infrastructure, anything the town's going to take over needs to be completed before those occupancy permits can be granted, in a nutshell.
Put that as part of the condition.
Yeah, there's a whole section that governs that.
You said completed. Is that completed, done, final coat?
No. So, yeah, there's nuances. So it's everything but the final coat, and then the final coat goes on. There's a period by which you want to wait for the base coat to settle and survive a winter season, and then you add the final coat. Same thing with landscaping. And there's a lot of nuances to that, and it's all governed in that section.
That's pretty common, that we've experienced before in the past, is that, you know, just say there's 50 units, you know, maybe only the first 20 or something, or 30 can be occupancy until the, when the road's bindered.
Right.
Then another 10 after the sidewalks are in, and until, basically, the last 10 aren't granted until the project's complete, something along the, something similar to that.
And I think you said you're going to probably do the Village Green right up front, right? Probably reclaim a Village Green in the beginning of the project.
We're going to do that work on Village Green to make a nice approach. I mean, it's pretty tough to market a project going down Village Green in the shape that it's in now. So that would probably be done, right, with the binder coat. We'd probably have some type of binder coat on Village Green.
On that point, do we have any proposal in writing on what you're proposing to do off-site on Village Green with the sidewalk and--
It's only been verbal at this point. We should memorialize it in a plan or something with that, just to get some feedback from the DPW.
Right. At the board, I think the board should have a plan that, a narrative and a plan, so that we can impose a condition that ties to something.
Good job, Dan. Good. So we've got a couple we have to look at. And you've got a couple for Sean as well. And Dan, you have a couple as well, Tommy, to look at and reflect on. All right. Any questions, any other questions for the board? Nope. Good. Tommy, anything else, or do you want to go with the continuation till, I think we're the 20th or 30th? You all set for tonight?
Yep, we're all set. And just whenever the next meeting is for a continuation.
The 20th will be the next meeting. Yeah.
What was that?
March 20th.
March 20th?
March 20th, yeah.
That would work.
I'm sorry. March 20th?
Yeah. You all set for tonight, or on this?
Yeah, I'm going to check my calendar, make sure available.
You are available. Of course you are.
I won't be here this morning.
You won't be, Joe won't be.
We were going to--
Sorry, my calendar's--
Yes, okay.
On a separate note, I'm going to tell John how great it went tonight, and he can stay home next time.
You save some money.
Entertained a motion to continue the public hearing for the enclave till March 20th at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for this evening. Long night. All right, good night.
Are you waiting anything on the mic?
No, I think we're going to, I think we're going to hold off a minute until next time. If that's all right, Amy. Get everybody out of here by 10:00. Could I entertain a motion to close this only Board of Appeals meeting on March 6th at 9:50 PM?
We could probably knock this out in a second. No? All right, fine. I thought it would. Make a motion to close the meeting.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.